I'd like to call the meeting order and thank everyone for their attendance tonight. Look forward to a very fine meeting. We will begin with the invocation by Reverend Cameron Randall from Eastern Shore Chapel. If everyone would stand for the invocation and remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Reverend, we're so glad to have you here tonight and thank you for coming.
Sir, thank you for the invocation. Let us pray. Holy One, we give you thanks this evening for the privilege of engaging in self-government. We're grateful for the opportunity to be gathered in this room this evening to undertake the affairs of the citizenry. We pray for the safety and the prosperity of this municipality, of the Commonwealth, and of our great nation. And we pray for peace and stability in the broader world. We pray particularly this evening that you would cause the elected and appointed officials in this room to maintain a spirit of discernment, of openness, to the administration of equity and justice with humanity and compassion. We pray as well for the citizens gathered in this room this evening that their participation in this forum would result in an inspiring, productive, and rewarding experience. Bless those in our region, throughout this city and this state, who are underserved, marginalized, underrepresented, and forgotten. These things we pray, in the name of the one whom we call Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend, thank you again. We appreciate you being here. We have the roll call. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, with Mr. Davenport being absent.
Yes, and Council, Mr. Davenport has had a death in his family, and he has had to leave to take care of that situation. Do I have a motion for the certification of the closed session?
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Call for the question, please.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have certified the closed session to be in accordance with a motion to recess.
Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes of January 9th, 2018?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call for the question, please.
By a vote of nine to zero, with the mayor abstaining, you have approved the minutes as submitted.
And I'm abstaining because I was not at that meeting. I now will go to the mayor's presentation, Darcy Warren, Muscular Dystrophy Association. Darcy, is that you? How are you?
Good, thank you.
We welcome you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I am here this evening to recognize the incredible joint efforts of the Virginia Beach Fire Department and Virginia Beach Professional Firefighters, Local 2924, and the citizens of Virginia Beach, the greatest city in the world.
You know I like you.
For their incredible impact through the 2017 MDA Fill the Boot campaign. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank the mayor and the city council for your continued support of the firefighters and their department for them supporting us. Professional firefighters have supported MDA for 65 years now. In that time, over $600 million has been raised for MDA. Here in Virginia Beach, we are so happy to have the department and the local collecting for us. Though we continue to work hard to identify treatments and a cure for muscular dystrophy, our firefighter friends have brought us light years since the program first began. Because of their support and funding, we are at an unprecedented time, and for the first time ever, we've had five drugs come through the FDA for approval to slow down the progression of many of our deadly diseases. Two of the drugs have been approved to treat the underlying cause of Duchenne muscular dystrophy and get significant muscle strength improvement to people living with it. The FDA also approved Spironza, the first drug to treat children and adults with spinal muscular atrophy, a rare and other fatal genetic diseases affecting muscle strength and movement. Also, there was one for ALS this year and myasthenia gravis. The average life expectancy of a boy with Duchenne muscular dystrophy has gone from age 16 to over 25 years in just the last 10 years. The network of 200 MDA clinic care centers, two of which are right here at Centerra and CHKD, provide care for over 100,000 Americans across the country. This multidisciplinary approach has shown to extend life expectancy to terminally ill patients an additional year over those not attending an MDA clinic. MDA has committed $18.2 million to new research this past year, and we are now supporting over 182 research projects, trials worldwide. And that's just to give you an idea where the money has been going. Your Virginia Beach firefighters save lives every day in the streets, homes, and businesses throughout the area. And by participating in the annual Fill the Boot drive, they are saving thousands more in helping those impacted by muscle disease to live a life free of barriers imposed around them, to live unlimited. MDA families live unlimited by defying their physical barriers every day. Many participate in marathons or bike across the country through our Team Momentum program. Some choose to follow their passions in arts and music, and many speak and rally on behalf of MDA to bring awareness and heart to our cause. MDA families live unlimited by sending their children to our summer camp, which we do every year in Wakefield, Virginia, where kids get to be kids for a whole entire week and participate in activities that would most say would be impossible in any other setting. Our families bring new meaning to the word courage, and it is because of the efforts of people like the men and women of Virginia Beach Firefighters, Professional, Local 2924, that many of them are able to live their lives filled with a new sense of hope. I'd like to thank again Mayor Sessom's, the city council for their support of Fill the Boot campaign, and ask you to join me in recognizing the extraordinary efforts to help our extraordinary MDA families. Could Chief Hutchinson and Local 2924 Fill the Boot Coordinator, BJ Rafferty, please come up? I'm thrilled to share with you that Virginia Beach Local 2924 this year raised $30,862, thanks in part to their efforts and the people of Virginia Beach, obviously. We couldn't do it without them. So here is a plaque for the local for their support, and then here is one for the Virginia Beach Fire Department. So thank you.
There you go.
Thank you for your time.
We thank you very much for coming down, and we really applaud what you're doing to make life better for a lot of people. But I also have to compliment, you know, the chief and everyone in our fire department and, you know, the union. We do have a great fire department. I'm happy to say just an hour or two ago, we talked about a great police department. We got their annual report, and I'm glad that we can give equal time now to the fire department. And I mean that. I mean, because we're proud of each and every one of you. We sincerely thank you for what you do every day, and this is beyond the call of duty, what you're doing here to help others. And so I speak on behalf of the council and the citizens of Virginia Beach. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I make a comment? Well, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
May I? Thank you. Thank you for coming down. I just want to say that we've had some ordinances here in our city that has made it very difficult for the firemen to get out in the streets and do the Fill the Boot campaign. And I want to give a shout out to BJ for all the work that he's done since taking over this chairmanship of the Fill the Boot campaign, and that he has worked within the system. He has worked within the boundaries and the confines that they have in keeping the public safety and keeping the Fill the Boot alive, and has come up with some creative ways to be able to capitalize on this campaign. And I look forward to working with you, BJ, to see what we can do to make it even better for you in the future. So thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Very good. Okay, Council, if y'all will bear with me, we're going to have some speakers on a couple of things in the public hearing. So I'm going to open the public hearing first on the exchange of excess city property on oyster leases. Could you call the speakers?
Wayne Gibson?
I have nothing.
Okay. And Ken Cord?
We welcome you, sir.
I just have a few things.
Excuse me?
I just have a few things on this. One, I'd like to know where the agreement is that has supposedly been agreed to. I'd like to know if everything's been dotted and crossed off before everything was signed off. If it's not, then there should be no business in why this isn't even in the public consent. So even the Supreme Court's ruling, what you guys got documents on regarding this situation is telling you that you shouldn't be doing it unless everything has been approved of.
Any other comments?
Nope.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other speakers?
No, sir.
I open a public hearing on the sale of excess property on 2305 Idiand Hill Road.
Ken Cord?
We welcome you back.
That was quick. I didn't expect it to be that quick. As far as with the property, from what I'm picking up on my people that do their homework, why is it that the city decided to go ahead and purchase the property, but yet they did it for over what the city needed? Because now, I have two questions for it, which is, now that you guys bought more than what was required, what's going to happen to that property, the excess? Now is that going to be sold off for less than what it was? The other is, okay, well, if you don't, what was the intention for it? Because nothing that government does is not, you know, just on the whim. There's a plan for it, just like down where you guys wanted to do the View Two. Those aprons have been sitting there for years. That tells you right there that they're going to build there for whatever it is. That was the View Two. So what's the purpose of it? What is the people not being told? So I don't get that. But yet, again, like Barbara keeps saying, and I keep saying to it and rebutting it, oh, you guys love the people, and you guys aren't doing anything against the people. You guys are here for the people. That doesn't make sense.
Any other comments? Thank you. Any other speakers on those?
No, sir. I'm sorry, though Mrs. Messner just brought me cards for ordinance for the zoning, the B2 zoning, and for short-term rentals. I know you discussed referring those.
Okay, excuse me. Okay, the zoning or planning on what items? Number, please.
That's Planning Number Five and Planning Six.
Okay. Number Five is being deferred. Do you still want to talk on that? Okay. And Number Six, okay. Then, Mr. Vice Mayor, you can go with the consent agenda, bless those two.
All right. Thank you. You ready?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval under the consent agenda, first under coordinate ordinances and resolutions. Item one, which is an ordinance declaring oyster lease number 21051 to be in excess of the city's needs and authorize the city manager to exchange this lease for a portion of oyster lease number 19788 from Brent James Ray Gills Cove Neighborhood Dredging Project. And Madam Clerk, would you please note that I'm abstaining on that item?
Yes, your honor.
Thank you. Item two is an ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments into a portion of City Rightway known as Wildwood Drive, located adjacent to 1801st Colonial Road, Ray Colonial Arms Associates LLC. And item three, resolution to extend the city's cable franchise with Verizon Virginia Inc. until the earlier of June 30, 2018, for the date on which the franchise agreement is renewed.
Open a public hearing on planning?
Under planning for consent, it's Item One, which is the application of Terrence and Tatiana Veal for a conditional use permit in the Rose Hall District. Item Two, the application of Decor LLC for a variance in the Kempsville District. Item Three, the application of Hertz Corporation and IEH Auto Parts LLC for a conditional use permit in the Rose Hall District. Item Four is the application of Princess Anne Shops Owners Association, Inc. for modification of proffers in the Princess Anne District.
So moved, Mr. Mayor. Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of ten to zero, noting the vice mayor's abstention, you have approved the consent agenda as read.
I do want to read time limits for speakers. I want to remind everyone that the city council speaker policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items and items where a public hearing is required by state law. As to all other items on the agenda, each speaker, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak, and I will adhere to that to be fair to everyone. Now, item number five, ordinance to amend section 901 of the city ordinance is to allow off-site parking facility as permitted, uses in the B2 zoning district with specific requirements. This was beyond consent for deferral. Call the speaker, please.
Barbara Messner?
Off-street parking.
Oh. Okay. The ordinance is for amend. I have never in 20 years seen so many amendments. They all created the Form-based Code. We had parking requirements when people opened a new business, and now it appears this one, B2, which is business zoning, that you want to allow off-site parking for these businesses. I mean, you're allowing properties and new businesses to go up without parking. It's ridiculous. I mean, there's no parking for anyone. So I oppose all these amendments and allow off-street parking when everyone should have a certain number of parking spaces.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six, ordinance regarding short-term rentals based on resolution adopted by the city council on January 9th, 2018, to allow additional time for the planning commission to consider the alternative ordinances, and the recommendation is to defer, and that is what was on consent. Call the speaker.
Barbara Messner?
I've spoken to some of the other people. They're planning to attend the planning meeting. I wish they would come because a lot of people don't view the planning meeting, and this is where most people who are interested, you know, pay attention. The very first event house, most of the Sandbridge people who are year-round homeowners, I think there's 25 percent, most of it is investment properties. And I think one of the first event houses was built by one of the prior council members, I don't need to say his name today, for somebody on the Economic Development Authority. And there's been problems with these event houses. Sandbridge isn't supposed to be many hotels, and then you rolled it in along with Airbnb. So, yeah, I hope people who want to get the information will tune into the planning meeting because that's where they plan to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for items number five and six to be deferred?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Is there any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have adopted the motion to defer the items.
I will now go to public comment. This is on the proposed pier project. I will remind everyone that there will be a three-minute time limit on each speaker. Call the speakers, please.
First speaker, Michelle Riley. And the second speaker will be Bob Mandigo.
We welcome you tonight.
Hi, y'all.
Hi.
I'm a little confused about how any of you can propose this with a straight face, frankly. Over the past year, I've watched you guys raise our real estate taxes so that you could give school board $6.75 million for all-day kindergarten, which still isn't funded. We've watched you do a $10 million tax break to City View Two. There's talks in the works for a surf park at the dome site. Our kids just missed six and a half days of school because our city wasn't ready for a storm event. After Matthew, our city spent half a million dollars to transport our students who were displaced during the storm to their home schools. We got FEMA money that was supposed to help after Hurricane Matthew, and you guys wanted to spend some of it on a study about flood remediation for the oceanfront, which seems a little odd to me that you'd want to build a pier down there when you basically just admitted that there's a good chance that it floods down there. I'm just a little bit confused as to if these developers are so wealthy, why they need a $25 million tax break on this. So I'd hope that you guys would maybe look at the optics of this. Seems how six of you are up for reelection in November, and maybe think about how this looks to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Bob Mandigo. And then Linwood Branch.
Bob, we welcome you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council members, for listening to us tonight. I spent a lot of time writing, so I'm going to kind of read this, but it is from the heart. "I favor the project to replace the Virginia Beach fishing pier. I fish there often since 1964. It's a great place to relax, catch fish, enjoy the weather, and meet people. On any given day, you'll find a mix of residents and visitors fishing for fun and maybe for their dinners. There are also locals and visitors who walk on the pier just to see who's catching fish and to ask questions about how to fish and where to get the equipment and tackle so they can come back later. My dad took us and our friends fishing there when we were kids. It was fun and expensive and easily accessible. It often put fresh fish on our dinner table. For the last several years, my anglers' club, Tidewater Anglers' Club, has been taking veterans from the VA Medical Center of Hampton fishing there twice a year, depending on the weather. The lackments have provided the veterans free admission, and Betty at Ocean Eddie's has fed them lunch. We take six to nine spinal cord-injured veterans who are confined to wheelchairs or gurneys, and up to 20 other veterans who are either residents or living in the community with VA supervision. They always enjoy their days at the pier, especially when they catch fish. The proposal I found on the city's website was submitted to the acting city manager on January 7th, 2016. That's the last information that I could find, and that's what I've used for my comments. On the design, a new concrete-pileed pier would be much more survivable where we get hurricanes and nor'easters than the current pier structure. There are numerous piers in Florida, as well as Jeanette's Pier at Nag's Head, that have used that design. Those piers can take large waves with minimal damage and are cheaper to repair than wooden piled structures. Extending the length to 880 feet puts the end of the pier within casting range of large migratory fish like red drum, cobia, and king mackerel that are very popular with coastal anglers. Public restrooms, the project would add to the current inventory at the oceanfront, which is another benefit. The parking and access, the proposal shows a free pier, which is not explained in the document. Does that mean free admission to anglers and to those just wanting to walk out on it? We're used to paying to fish. The proposal has pictures of Jeanette's Pier in Nag's Head, and it looks like the proposed pier would be a larger facility with similar amenities." What is this?
It goes red. I got to cut you off, unfortunately, to be fair to everyone.
Well, that's fine. Okay. "The proposal's site design does not show easy handicapped access to the pier. It appears mobility-restricted patients, like veterans confined to wheelchairs and gurneys, would have to unload on Atlantic Avenue or at least cross it after they parked. Overall, this is a great project." I have two more lines.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Linwood Branch. And then Chris Stone.
We welcome you.
Mayor, members of council, city manager, city attorney, and our new city clerk. The resort area has come a long way since the 1990s. Some of you have been involved in that, and we thank you for your vision and support. The traveling public has many options, and they look for a pleasing environment for themselves and their families. The pier project is a continuation of the renaissance of the resort. Tourism had hit rock bottom in the 1980s. Council formed the Resort Area Advisory Committee, a citizen group which came up with a list of projects and funding ideas. Tourism taxes were raised to fund the prioritized items. The first step was a five-block Atlantic Avenue demonstration project. The contrast with the remaining 35 blocks was such that the improvements were accelerated to 10 blocks a year, cutting the completion time in half. Then came the new boardwalk and seawall. Our boardwalk is recognized as one of the top 10 in the country. It is a sight to behold to watch the enjoyment people get from our beautiful boardwalk. One of the things on the advisory committee's list was a modern concrete pier. We've talked about it since the early 90s. Now we have an opportunity to extend the boardwalk more than the length of two football fields out over the ocean and ensure that this promenade will be free and open to the public for as long as it stands. This is another great opportunity to add to our list of things to do for our tourists and locals. There was opposition to the Atlantic Avenue improvements. There was opposition to the seawall project. But I don't believe you could find a person today who would argue that we would have been better off with the old Atlantic Avenue and the old boardwalk. I don't believe we would have had the private sector investment at the oceanfront that we've had without those projects either. The pier project and boardwalk extension fit right into the vision for the resort and will be enjoyed by many for many decades. I urge you to support this worthwhile project.
Thank you for coming.
And I always heard that that flashing button mentioned you were doing a good job, so. Thank you so much. There you go.
Chris Stone. And then Tim Wurst.
Chris, we welcome you, sir.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Jones, members of council, city manager Hanson. My name is Chris Stone. Special shout-out to our new city clerk and manager. Congratulations on your appointment. I'm a business owner in Virginia Beach, and my wife and I, we reside at the oceanfront. And I have lived in Virginia Beach my entire adult life. And tonight, I'm asking for your support to authorize a solicitation of bids from the public for the long-term lease of public beach to construct a public pier. The existing pier built in 1960 has survived hurricanes and nor'easters and has served the city well. As a professional engineer, I know that the existing timber structure has exceeded its anticipated life expectancy for nearly 20 years, and like the rest of us, with age comes with accelerated deterioration. It is time to retire the old pier and construct a new one. It has been reported that we have three major economic drivers in Hampton Roads: defense, the port, and tourism. Together, they account for 55 percent of the value of our regional economic output. Whether our friends and neighbors know it or not, tourism directly supports our way of life, contributes $1.4 billion to the Virginia Beach economy, generating over 13,000 jobs and $256 million in salaries. Defense spending, on the other hand, will continue to come under the scrutiny in Washington in another potential bracket 2021, and the activities at the port do little to stimulate job growth in Virginia Beach. I support the belief that Virginia Beach can be a world-class resort, be a year-round tourist destination, and effectively compete against any other resort in the mid-Atlantic for tourism dollars. But like any resort, we must continually reinvest and reinvent ourselves. Think of an amusement park, an amusement park that never creates a new ride versus one that continually updates and reinvents itself with new attractions. Which one would you or your family go to? The pier could be an iconic feature, exclusive to Virginia Beach, free and open to the public, develop desperately needed public parking at the oceanfront, create one of the few public parks for public entertainment, and continue to support the vision of sustainable, long-term growth in the tourism industry and support the growth in the entertainment district. Now, I know that the city has many infrastructure priorities, but council created the tip fund, which uses taxes from restaurant meals, hotel rooms, and amusements for just this purpose. That is, to use tourism dollars and not the general fund to upgrade our tourism infrastructure, which benefits everyone who lives, works, and plays in Virginia Beach with the lowest tax rate in Hampton Roads. So I'm asking for your support to authorize a solicitation of bids from the public for the long-term lease of public beach to construct a public pier and to use the tip fund to continue to invest in our city and the tourism economic engine which supports it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Tim Wurst. And then RJ Nutter.
We welcome you, sir.
Good evening. My name's Tim Wurst. I live in the Princess Anne District. And following up on the speaker, I'm not sure who would win a bid if you're bidding against the city of Virginia Beach. Who's going to win a bid if you're bidding against the city of Virginia Beach? I have a couple of notes I just wanted to go to before the meeting started, and this is very troubling. And in the prayer, the word "discernment" was used. Behind me, there are some folks that I heard speaking before we started this whole thing. They said that mayor has talked to Bruce today, and for the people behind me not to speak because we don't want to get anybody angered and screw this thing up. This vote is a given for the pier. This vote is a given for the pier.
That's a lie.
Sir, I just heard it.
I've got a correction there.
I got three minutes.
Okay, and I'm tired of hearing people say things that are not true, and that is a bold-faced lie.
I have three minutes.
Fine, well, tell the truth.
I just heard it from the folks behind me. I told one of the ladies in front of me that it happened before this started. So you're calling me a liar when I just heard it? I'd like to continue on with my three minutes.
Go right ahead.
How can the vote be given? How can this be a given when you haven't heard from the people? How do we have a city council meeting when you haven't heard from the people to have a vote if it's a given? How does a Ferris wheel get used when the temperatures are 30 to 40 degrees in December, January, February, and sometimes before or after that? If the pier is such a great idea, and it's gonna recoup its money in four short years, why doesn't Bruce Thompson and all these families do it themselves and keep all that How can you, as a council with good conscience, approve a pier and tell people of Windsor Woods, Sandbridge, Punggol, and wherever else, "Screw you and your flooding problems. We don't care. You wait 15 years, and we'll improve this flooding." How can you do that? I met a few police officers this past weekend at the gun show in Hampton, and I'm gonna do this quickly. They asked, "How many 4x4s do we have that can respond to a call in the snow like that?" We don't have many or any that can respond to a call for us citizens in a police car or an EMS. Never mentioned earlier today was the billion dollars in unfunded--a billion, not billions-- a billion dollars in unfunded liabilities. And lastly, before my time's up, Shannon, kudos to you. You rode with the city workers, and you rode with them as they were preparing streets and doing that plowing. And that's the kind of city council person who was seeing what's getting done, and I just appreciate that. When I heard that, I thought that was fantastic. But kudos to you.
Thank you for coming down.
Thank you for your time. And I did a lot. I heard it.
RJ Nutter.
Next speaker.
And then after that, Gerald Fantano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
We welcome you tonight.
It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Congratulations, Amanda.
Thank you.
For the record, I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the pier owners and the partners who are part of this deal. I'd like to introduce them. You all know them very well. Jimmy and Mrs. Capps are here tonight. Jimmy, please stand up. Jimmy and his family purchased this property in 1969. They've owned and operated the hotel since 1970, almost 50 years. The Saboni family, who could not be here tonight, have been developers and owners of property in Virginia Beach for 30 years. And the Merton, Lockman, and Bonnie families, and the Mertons, Mr. Merton and Mr. Lockman are here as well, and they came to your briefing earlier and had to listen to everyone talk about how bad the pier was. So I'll tell you, they, their families, built that pier in 1950. They borrowed the money, they built it, and they've operated and owned it since 1950. The previous speaker had 1960. I'm happy to tell you, it was 1950 that that pier was built. For, as long as I remember, for at least the last 12 to 15 years, the city has approached the pier by wanting to redo it, and they have looked at all kind of ways to do that. They have looked at financing and found that to be virtually impossible. So we actually advertised in the Wall Street Journal almost 10 years ago for bids and proposals to develop the pier property. We had a number of people who presented proposals. All of them fell by the wayside. None of them could get financing. None of them could get the capital to go for it. And a result, the pier sat longer and longer and longer. So with all that, they finally, the pier, the Breakers, and the Sabonis, while they're all looking at individual development plans, decided to get together and come up with a plan that they could work together. That changed everything, and it brought before you this opportunity. They've all known Bruce Thompson through most of their lives, and Bruce had long said, "If I can ever help you all do something with that property, I want to do so." And so I'm happy to tell you that in this project, and probably the only one involving Mr. Thompson that I'm involved in, that he will be a minority owner, and I mean a minority owner of this project. All of the partners in these different partnerships have the opportunity to participate to the extent they would like to participate. Some will do more than others. I guess I'm doing a good job, so I'll be very quick to follow Linwood's lead.
You're doing a good job.
So I would tell you that, just to give you some idea of how this is so badly needed in the south end of the beach, that's very important to get you to understand. Also, over 70% of this entire project, it's a surface parking lot. There's been no large mixed-use project in the south end of the beach since I've been here. So that should show you why here, why now, and how badly this is needed for--we're talking 70% of this property is a surface parking lot at the oceanfront.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments.
My pleasure, sir.
Next speaker, please.
Gerald Fantano, and then Reece Greenham.
We welcome you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Gerard Fantano. It's a weird name, I know. Councilmen, councilwomen, I've been here for 24 years. I've lived my life on a simple phrase that I developed when I was a kid. Just because you have the ammunition doesn't mean you have to shoot all of the shots, even if you have the chance to. What does that mean, you might ask? To me, it means this. I've grown up my entire life working in retail, haven't made a lot of money, but the money I have made, I've used it wisely. I've invested in stocks, went to college, and saving for a house one day. Why am I telling you this, you might ask? It's because sometimes when I see the decisions, especially like this pier, it makes me think of maybe, you know you have the ammunition, and you want to fire all those shots, even though you have the chance to. Doesn't mean you should. A pier, as someone did say, the oceanfront is beautiful. The pier is beautiful. I walk there almost every week. It'd be a great idea if we were a utopia. If this city was a utopia where we didn't have veterans living on the streets, I'd say build the pier. If this was a utopia where teachers could live on their salary, then I'd say build the pier. If this was a utopia where some of our neighborhoods weren't sinking every six months out of the year, I'd say build the pier. If this was a utopia where we could safely walk down the streets and not have to worry about us or our children's safety, I'd say build the pier. And lastly, if this was a utopia where our streets were paved correctly and our police officers were safe and well armed and well trained and well paid, I'd say build the pier. But we're not. We're not a utopia, and that's not us. The money, and as I can say from all of us here, we're taxpayers. I have no problem paying more taxes if it goes to everything I just listed, but it's not. It's going to appear. So I'd say this. You have the ammunition, but do you have to fire that shot right now? We have other things we need to take care of. We're your citizens, not your cows, so stop milking us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Reece Greenham. And then after Mr. Greenham, it's Dane Bly.
We welcome you.
Good evening, members of city council. My name is Reece Greenham. I live in the southern end of the city. I've been here since 1979. I was a dairy farmer. I don't like being milked, so I'll just sort of reference that. Look, you probably know my position on this, all of you. No. Enough is enough. A $200 million convention center to replace the $36 million convention center, a $40 million fieldhouse, as Mr. Branch was mentioning, a beautiful new boardwalk, on and on and on. Your job is stewardship. Your job is to look out for the fiduciary responsibility of those of us who live here and spend our money wisely. There is no need for this project. If the private sector wants to invest this money, go for it, if it's really a market for it. As another gentleman pointed out, I'm not going to be riding a Ferris wheel in 25 degrees, and if your goal is to make year-end destination, a Ferris wheel is not really going to get you there. It's probably actually a pretty poor idea. You've got a wave pool, you've got an endless list of projects, but instead, Mr. Hanson said, "We gotta take 15 years to come up with a solution for flooding for a 10-year event." This Saturday, I went to the Virginia Beach Taxpayer Alliance meeting, and we were briefed on the state of the region by Dr. Koch from ODU. If you have listened to that, you would absolutely not vote for this project. We have very serious economic problems facing our city, not to mention that we are sinking, unfunded liabilities and pension, and we have flooding issues. Really serious economic issues. Mr. Moss put it all out on Facebook. He talked about tourism and the decline in what it's going to be in the percentage of our per capita and how that's impacting the lack of our jobs. You guys, stop with this. Pay attention to the things you've got to do, the young man that was just up there. Your job is to take care of the basic responsibilities of the city. It's not to build piers and to get involved in real estate, and as one gentleman said, "If this was an amusement park, you need to build new rides." Well, at least amusement parks are funded by the private sector, and they risk their own money, but you're risking mine. So I see I only have 30 seconds left. I've got a lot of things to say. I don't have time, so I'm just gonna end up with this. I once had to perform in The Music Man, and I got to tell you, Professor Harold Hill would be so proud of himself. He's going on and up down the east coast, Barbara, selling Ferris wheels and piers and all manner of things, and you guys are just buying it. There's trouble in River City, all right, but it isn't a pier that's going to fix those troubles. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Dane Bly, and then Nancy Parker.
Dane, we welcome you tonight.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, good evening. My name is Dane Bly. I live in the Bayside area, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the Virginia Beach Taxpayer Alliance. So we think, or we've been very disappointed thus far in the whole process here of this pier project. In fact, we really think it's been disrespectful to the people. We know you've already made up your minds. You've seen a lot more than we have about this, and we're sure the approval of the pier is already a done deal. So any merits of it are already sullied by the process. If you truly value our input, then please schedule public hearings and meetings before you reach decisions. Councilman Dyer, you've been banging that drum for years, rightly so. Thank you. Alan Greenspan said, "Crony capitalism is essentially a condition in which public officials are giving favors to people in the private sector in payment of political favors." Why not acknowledge that you're voting for the new pier because it's going to help the owners, investors of the proposed hotel and timeshare? They'll clearly benefit from a competitive advantage. So I can only imagine how the folks at the Hyatt House who recently are building that, how they must feel, or the thousands of entrepreneurs who've invested their own capital in the risk reward for their businesses without any favors or any help whatsoever from City Hall. Be clear about all the businesses and the people that are involved in the projects that include our tax dollars. So do the right thing and make public the names of all the boards, the people on the boards, the different committees, investors in projects, and especially the Virginia Beach Development Authority. I think there's a lot of people don't know exactly what they do, and I think it's important that the public better understand exactly what the VBDA's involvement in this particular project is as well. I'll tell you, sometimes I feel like I'm watching the next Files episode when it comes to some of these projects in the city. It's hard to follow all the plotlines. Another point, too, is please, we need to make it clear that when it comes to the idea that tourism dollars only are going to fund the pier, we all know that every time we go out to dinner, we pay a meals tax, a very hefty one, actually, here in Virginia Beach compared to the rest of the country. Every time we go to the movie theater, citizens pay the amusement tax as well. So please, that's just another part of being transparent so that we all have a better understanding of what's going on. I bought a little show and tell tonight, too. I don't know if you had a chance to see in The Beacon a while ago, it was a really good article, The History of Virginia Beach, and they looked at, well, one, they opened the time capsule, and the contents, of course, had been destroyed by water. I hope that's not an omen. But there was a quotation from Mr. Scott, who was the city manager at the time, it was said of him. "He established the first code of ethics for the city. He wanted transparency in governing and to end cronyism and backroom dealing." We need that help again today. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Nancy Parker.
Nancy, we welcome you tonight.
And then Dylan Lloyd.
We welcome you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Sessom, members of city council, Mr. Hanson, Mr. Stiles. Mrs. Barnes, welcome, Mrs. Barnes. You have some big shoes, but I know she trained you well. Since I only have three minutes, right? Okay. I've crossed a lot out. All right, the resort, I'm Nancy Parker, and I'm representing the Resort Beach Civic League, and I'm the vice president. And normally, the president, Brad Capps, would be standing here before you, but his family is involved in this program, and so he has gracefully abstained from any involvement in our decision-making process. The Resort Business Civic League supports and encourages development that enhances, revitalizes, and adds a sense of arrival and presence to the oceanfront business district. While supporting revitalization, historically, the RBCL has been consistent in respecting, preserving, and protecting residential neighborhoods, which have been long-term anchors of the resort district. On December 17, 2017, a membership meeting of the Resort Beach Civic League was held to discuss the concept plan of the 15th Street Pier Project. The RBCL is of the opinion that the 15th Street Pier Project, as currently presented, is grand in stature and vision, but does not meet the parking needs for its envisioned restaurants, shops, hotel, and timeshare towers. This shortage of readily available parking will profoundly impact the quality of life for the adjacent residential neighborhoods. The 15th Street Pier Project illuminates the fact that parking continues to be a problematic and an expensive issue for the city and residential neighborhoods. The RBCL holds that the lack of suitable and sustainable parking must be addressed before the RBCL could be supportive of this project. Additionally, the RBCL is aware of another significant proposal, the Dome Site Project, which is under consideration for development. This project also raises parking concerns which could further profoundly impact the adjacent neighborhood, creating a negative domino effect for residents. Your five-minute maximum acceptable walking distance diagram, which I brought and you all saw, it's a Venn diagram. If you'll notice, right next to the star of the sea area, those neighborhoods caught in the crosshairs of both of those projects. Think about it for a second. The residential permit parking program has made a significantly positive impact by allowing the neighborhoods to have a sense of community peace and quiet after 8:00 a.m. from nighttime beach visitors. However, due to the exceptions in the restricted parking program, this still continues to be a problem with employee parking. The RBCL remains committed to working with developers and council in preserving the resort residential district. The RBCL is committed to working for the creation and implementation of sustainable parking solutions for the 15th Street Pier Project that are feasible for the adjoining residential neighborhood and the oceanfront resort district. Thank you for your time and energy. As you examine these issues, your neighborhoods, our neighborhoods, are the bedrock of Virginia Beach.
Thank you very much for your comments. I'm glad to have you tonight.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to recognize that Mrs. Parker served on the city council for 16 years, and I believe Mr. Branch served for eight. I just thought they deserved to be recognized for their public service.
Mr. Mandigo.
Okay, oh yeah, Mr. Mandigo as well. Thank you for reminding me. I just thought they should be recognized for their service.
Thank you.
Well, I want to say, when I was back there in your workshop, and I was watching the numbers flying back and forth and the stuff going back and forth, I felt like a ping-pong ball, and I said, "Oh, my gosh, I have to gear my brain back up again to keep up the pace you all are going." So you'd be commended and congratulated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy, for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Dylan Lloyd, and then Seth Connell.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Thanks for having me.
You're welcome.
Dylan Lloyd, VBPCA Historical Society, Hampton Roads Transportation Organization, Citizens Advisory Committee, resident. I gotta give credit where credit is due. I've lived here all my life. I've seen some good stuff, I've seen some not-so-good stuff. General Booth Boulevard, this corridor, while some people might not agree with everything that was done there, was done smart. It was built in a way that wasn't overburdened, where the infrastructure and the concurrency of services ran along with the building, the certain things like corporate landing, green flash, the movie theater, and now we have a grocery store. I'm sad to see these lots go away and things build up, but it was done well. This, and just coming from a planning background, this is silly. The pier, first of all, you don't need to build a pier to create parking, and there are several cities that have built piers, such as St. Petersburg, Florida, Santa Monica, California, as well as Jeanette's Pier in North Carolina, where it not only ended up going over budget, but they lost revenue. The shops there are losing revenue at Jeanette's Pier down North Carolina for the past three years in a row. years in a row. Now, as we say this, and we talk about this, and have a discussion, again, I'm appreciative of this city. I know we have won awards for the way it's been managed, and people keep moving in because it's a good place to live, it's a great place to live. But if just, we make a few bad decisions, it could throw all that off track. Right now, tonight, as I sit in my neighborhood, and we just had a trash service fee increase, I believe, either last year or the year before, and I have blue cans lined all up and down my neighborhood because we haven't had recycling taken out in over a month. The last time we did was before Christmas, and now we have wrapping paper and boxes and New Year's bottles just kind of flying all over the place, it looks like the Wild West. We have a snowplow team of, what, like 32 trucks, and they don't even get sent out properly. We have neighborhoods, they're getting flooded because basic dredging services can't be provided to these neighborhoods, and I think this, these solutions could be easily identified if we just get our priorities straight. So all I'm asking is that we reexamine this, take it easy, and do this in a smart way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, what neighborhood you live in?
Red Wing.
All right, good. Thanks.
Seth Connell. And then David Nygaard.
We welcome you tonight.
Thank you, council members. My name is Seth Connell, I'm a resident of the Kempsville District, Jessica Abbott's District, and thank you for your time. I come here as a concerned resident, and I'm one who sees a systemic issue that really needs to be addressed here in our city. It's been concerning me for some time, and as time progresses, as we move forward, it's really getting to be, there's really being an increased sense of urgency for myself and for many other residents. The problem that many of us see here isn't merely a financial or a political one, but a moral one. There's financial and political aspects to this problem, but the very heart of it is a moral issue, and one which shows that this council's priorities are not properly in line with what the residents of this city truly need. What we're seeing here from our council is really a dereliction of duty when it comes to the needs of our citizens. The city manager is claiming that we need a pier that will cost tens of millions of dollars, and who knows how much money to continue maintaining after it's built, yet where is the demand for this before the city manager has made this proposal? Are there petitions on change.org demanding that a pier be constructed at the oceanfront? I know there's a petition against it. Are there dozens of construction companies seeking out a plot of land at the oceanfront of 15th Street who want to buy it with their own money, finance it with their own money, and shoulder the risk of that investment squarely on their shoulders? Not to my knowledge, everything I've seen has indicated exactly the opposite. The demand for it appears to be a creation of the city government and not one of the genuine demand of the market here. Perhaps, perhaps it's not the case, maybe I'm misreading things, but if that's the case, then that shows that the council needs to be more clear on what exactly is going on here. The proposed pier, a plan to create a new attraction at the oceanfront, appears to be a good idea at first glance, but giving a more thorough assessment of what's actually going on in our city, our council should conclude that now is not the time to spend tens of millions of dollars on a project that will inevitably outweigh any hypothetical benefits. Many of our neighborhoods are flooding because of the intense rainstorms that we occur, that occur in our city on a regular basis. Who can forget the horrendous flood damage from Hurricane Matthew back in Windsor Woods in 2016? Some people over there had nearly a foot of water in their houses, or even more. Is that not a critical and pressing issue for this council to address? How about the recent storm that dumped massive amounts of snow on our region? And where I was, there was 10 inches of snow, and yet we only have 30-something clouds to go clear that, but it took another week and a half or so for all the snow to completely melt. If the climate is changing, as many claim, and these are going to be a more regular occurrence, the council needs to authorize more resources to be devoted to taking away that snow off the streets so our economy can keep moving and not be completely stagnant. Those are just two of the major issues that our city needs to face. They're not wants or desires, but real needs. The pier is a want, but it's not a need. So I would like to thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, we appreciate you coming down.
And for you to reject this proposal.
Next speaker, please.
David, David Nygaard. And then Virginia Wasserberg. David Nygaard.
David Nygaard. Next speaker.
Virginia Wasserberg. And then after Mrs. Wasserberg is Jesse Wasserberg.
We welcome you tonight.
Good evening, city council, city attorney, city manager, city clerk, and everybody else here that's not wearing clothes supported by the TIP fund. Good evening to you. I am against the pier proposal that is here before you, and there are a lot of reasons why, but I'm just going to approach a few of those reasons. Like you've already heard tonight, the history of the pier that exists, back in 1950, the Lockman, Merton, and Bonnie families got together, pooled their own finances, and privately developed this pier. So why don't they do that now? There's three of them, plus three more families that want to participate in this proposal, so why don't they all pool their money together and develop a concrete pier? Which, by the way, is a good idea for the city to have, a concrete pier. I'm not against it. I'm very much in favor of a pier, but I am against that our city get into the pier-building business and the pier-maintaining business. Second point I wanted to make, someone brought up about the Santa Monica Pier. I've done some homework here about that, I have a lot of homework, I provided it to Ms. Kane today through email, and be welcome to provide that information to you guys, too. Santa Monica Pier is a city-funded pier, and in 2011, Santa Monica had a deficit. Their expenditures for their pier outweighed their revenues. Did you know that? And then, in their 2017-18 fiscal year budget, they saw an increase of 153% to maintain their pier and their operating costs. It went up 153% for their expenditures. Now, Ms. Wilson brought up a great point, and you're informal this evening, and that was, do we know how much revenue is this pier going to bring in? And city manager told her, "No, you don't know." And so I just think it's not really a great idea for you to go forward in spending taxpayer dollars, even in the TIP fund, which, by the way, is funded through people like myself who stay in Virginia Beach hotels, eat at Virginia Beach restaurants, and participate in Virginia Beach amusements. It's not just funded by those that come in from outside, it's funded by us. It's not a good idea to fund that when you don't know how much money this is going to bring in. And if you look at Jeanette's Pier, guess who owns that? The state of North Carolina owns Jeanette's Pier, not the city of Maggs Head. And the state of North Carolina Assembly in 2014 said, "This might not be such a great investment for us." So there's a lot of things to look at, not just your cumulative fund balance, and that you might have this great amount of money by not having an arena.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Next speaker, please.
Jesse Wasserberg. And then Diana Howard.
We welcome you.
Thank you. Good evening. Do you guys like new things? I like new things. I like when you get like, like a new phone, and it comes in that box, it's got the cellophane wrapper, you unwrap it, and it's got, you pull the box apart, it makes that kind of sound when you're pulling it apart, and it's got that new phone smell, you can smell it, and then you just get all excited, "Oh, I have this new thing," and you pull the plastic off, the screen, and you get it all set up, and you do all that stuff. The problem with new things, or a new phone, is, you know, my phone's getting kind of old, and now, now it doesn't charge well anymore, it kind of runs slow, and it needs maintenance. And just like, just like a new pier might seem nice and shiny, and it seems like a great idea, and yeah, we all want a new pier, we all want to go down and have some fun, there's the big problem of maintenance. And as I've been up here and have told you guys a couple times now, we don't do a very good job at maintenance here in Virginia Beach. We obviously have a big stormwater problem where we don't maintain the storm drains, there's not a, there's not a maintenance plan where you guys are going out there inspecting the storm drains. Who's, who's going to be maintaining the pier? Is the pier maintenance going to come ahead of maintaining the storm drains? Is that the new priority? Because it's the oceanfront, so that makes sense, that's kind of how you guys roll, is, you know, let's, let's make sure we're putting the money out at the oceanfront, because the tourists are more important than the people who, who live in the city. And living a couple miles from town center, that sounds kind of crazy, because I would think you'd want to put some money in there and not see those homes flood. And, you know, the fact that, you know, as I think my wife just pointed out, is, is we don't really know how much revenue this is going to bring in. We've got no idea, and we don't have the idea how much it's going to cost to maintain. And I read that the Santa Monica Pier costs a million dollars a year to maintain, it was a $25 million pier to build. So every 25 years, they could have built a new pier. I mean, that, that's pretty expensive. So why is the city and the taxpayers, regardless of it's a TIP fund, which I've heard needs support from the general fund on occasions, or the general fund, it's all tax dollars? You know, why, why is the city going to own a pier? Should the city be in the pier business? Do we create a new department, so that, you know, now we have to, you know, have a pier department and pier people to go out there and manage the pier? And what do we really get from it? We get hotels, and we get new service jobs? You know, service jobs are not necessarily the best-paying jobs. Is that really, you know, do we need more service jobs, or do we need more infrastructure, technology jobs, jobs that are really going to be able to support families?
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Diana Howard.
Diana, we welcome you tonight.
And then Mrs. Marsh.
Good evening, folks, I'm not feeling well, so I try and make this short. The pier, it's not just about the pier, it's about the litany of projects you all want to do. There is the dome site with the wave pool and the field house, and the city manager brought out that we're going to bring the Convention Center Hotel back, and Ms. Henley, no, it was Ms. Wilson, said that she was concerned about the field house being put where the arena was going to go, because it shouldn't go there, because that might come back, right? So is it the function of government to do entertainment? No, it is not. We do not pay taxes for entertainment, and I do appreciate that tourism is a big industry, and it brings a lot of money into our city, but if it keeps going back into the tourism projects, the perception is that it's not benefiting us, especially if our taxes and fees keep getting raised every year. So you have to appreciate that. I went back and looked at the Bayside High School budget hearing, and I listened to all those people talking about their flooding problems, and talking about how they've been flooding since 1967 was the earliest one I heard. So here we've been building developments and stuff like it around, knowing that these people had drains that were too small to handle the water flow, and yet we continue to build developments and stuff that had to go into the same areas to be, you know, dispensed. And we did nothing. These people have been waiting long enough to have these problems addressed, 15 years, yet we are right on it when it's a tourist project. And the one thing, if people want to come here and do a tourist project, we appreciate that, yes, come here, build your project, but the corporate welfare that they, they say, "Oh, well, this project's not going to happen unless we get a subsidy from the city. We have to have you build us our parking garage, we have to keep our taxes and fees to pay off our debt and stuff." When that pier started breaking down from a hurricane and stuff, are we responsible to fix it? Are we responsible to replace it? Are we responsible to now give these families exclusive rights to lease the upper deck while we pay for the pier and, and take on those liabilities? I think not.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mrs. Marsh. And then Ken Cord.
Good evening, mayor, council members, city manager Hanson. I am before you again because I am a concerned citizen, and I read the Virginia Beach government website where the majority of people on your own website, mayor, were saying, "No pier, no pier, no pier." If any of you go and read your website, you did a posting, and people said, "No pier." So because they did that, I thought, how can I show you they say, "No pier?" Well, I did a little thing called a change.org petition. 280 people in just three days said, "No pier." People don't want the pier. Now, maybe your corporate welfare is good for the developers who need it, but the citizens don't want the pier. And unless you've made a decision already and you've made a side deal, I'm asking you to back off and think about this a little more, because you haven't done your homework. You don't know what it's going to cost to maintain the pier, and you might have forgot about this little thing called lawsuits. I don't know if you've ever heard of federal lawsuits, but you have in your in-basket on Messenger. If you open Messenger, Messenger messages from me about federal lawsuits, not little local city or regional lawsuits, federal lawsuits, because when people get into Ferris wheels, sometimes they fall out. And when they fall out, mayor, they sue. And when they sue, they usually end up in federal court. And that is a ton of money, and a ton of time, and a ton of risk, and I, as a taxpayer, don't want to think of my tax dollars going to be paying for someone who fell out of a Ferris wheel, which is what I consider to be a hurricane magnet. When that Ferris wheel gets hit by a hurricane, and it becomes a projectile and goes into the homes, or goes into the people that are around it, we could have even more risk. And you just, you rush these things ahead. It's really disappointing to me as a taxpayer, you rushed ahead last year when you had to pay for the full-day kindergarten. You had to increase taxes 6 million, 6.7 billion. You did that. Okay, great. Shortly thereafter, they came up with a $20 million, $20 million surplus. Did you give the money back to the people? No. You didn't give, our taxes go up, they don't go down, and we still have this little thing called the unfunded pension liability. You put in 100 million, but it needs 150 million. You shorted the pension liabilities, it's gone up, 415 million in two years, guys. We have a very underfunded pension liability. So hopefully, if you work as a police officer, a school teacher, or a city worker, you know that we're going to have to wait 26 years to get this funding paid.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Ken Cord. Ken Cord, and then Barbara Messner.
We welcome you, sir.
I guess to the gentleman that spoke earlier who said, "Oh, well, I don't understand where these, you know, Debbie Downers," not paraphrasing, where these people that don't want a pier are going to come from. Hello, we're standing in front of you. But seriously, this is a joke. We're creating problems that we can't handle already. You guys, even the city manager's like, "Oh, we got flooding problems that are at the oceanfront," which is why you guys tried to reroute the FEMA money to the oceanfront. Do you guys not understand laws of gravity? When you put more crap in one spot, the faster it sinks. And almost every year, it's been probably at least a couple of years since we had to do it, but often enough, we have to replenish the sand over at the beach. So what do you think sand's going to do when it's under a ton of cement? And it's not just a ton, literally, but tons. It's ridiculous. And yet, again, like someone said earlier, you sit here with a straight face and be like, "Oh, this is great, this is great." This is ridiculous. And to the gentleman that said, "Oh, well, you know, so-and-so said that this was a done deal because, well, supposedly you spoke to the mayor, or to Bruce Thompson," but yet if you didn't make up your mind already, then how could that be even close, if not true? I find it ridiculous. And again, I will say it again until the cows come home. You guys sit here and tout that, "Oh, we care about our residents, our bosses," because that's what we are, y'all's bosses, but yet you do stuff like this. It defies any logic.
Next speaker, please.
Barbara Messner.
We welcome you back.
Glad you can say that with a straight face. Before I forget, I would like to, you know, ask Mr. Moss and Ms. Abbott if they would have their Facebooks open so we can be updated, because I really have no idea how y'all feel unless someone else tells me. But I'm fully aware that the tourism, TIP, TIP, everything, that all stays at the oceanfront. We spent billions over the years, you know, magazines, TV ads. I could just, get sick at my stomach's the best word I can use. Every time I see ads on TV for the races, you know, months ahead, Cox Cable, TV10, all these stations, you just spend so much money, it's like drunk sailors, and no offense to the military. the military. Sorry, but that face just...
We're not sequitur.
Okay. As far as the long-term lease, Moss, you're laughing, but you thought it was great for the arena, a dollar a year. What kind of lease is this? And the city's going to run it? I always talk about conflicts. Ms. Wilson, Ms. Rosemary Capps Wilson, you're related to the Capps family. You sell real estate.
I'm not related to Jimmy Capps.
I didn't say Jimmy Capps.
Okay, well...
Okay, all right. Can I have my time, and then you can say whatever you please? Okay. You sell real estate, it's right there listed on the city site, your bio, you know, you're affiliated with Town Bank, you make money off all the condos and everything that are sold down there. You shouldn't be discussing it. Will Sessom, who has his head down, and usually your seat is squirmed down so nobody can see your face, you have stock in Town Bank. They're talking about the dome project. At least one of your daughters is part of Venture, and they won the, you know, okay. As far as the snow, you know, the snowplows, the reason they didn't clear some of the roads is because they were clearing for the Convention Center for the international visitors. They're staying at fourteen hotels. So, from the third, I haven't been here that long for the light to be flashing, so from the third to the eighth, only one day, the tourists weren't taken by motor coach from their fourteen oceanfront hotels. Okay, as far as 250 for the light show, only 37,000, according to the FOIA request, has even been shown. So, where's that money going? And getting back to Mr. Moss...
We thank you very much for your comments.
It's not three minutes.
It is three minutes, and I thank you.
All right. Diana Burke.
We welcome you tonight.
I actually wasn't going to speak tonight, but after listening, I just wanted to say thank you. You have the, just the hardest job. You couldn't pay me to sit in your seat. I just have to tell you, we are so fortunate to have each and every one of you sitting where you sit. It's really unbearable to sit out there and listen to some of the disrespect that is provided, and so I just wanted to say God bless you all. I totally trust each and every one of you to make whatever decision is correct for this city, and I know I'm going on a bit of a rampage, but wow, I'm so glad we pray before we come here, to be honest with you, because I think we need it. Everyone, I so appreciate everyone's thoughts, but let's just be respectful to one another. Enough said. Now, let's get on to a little bit of business. $4.9 million in fiscal years 16 and 17 was sent off to our beautiful school system because of hotel sales tax. So, I love my little flow charts, I live with them on my desk, and I know you know who, that, you know, what they mean. I would love to share with the group one day exactly the flow chart of hotel sales tax and restaurant sales tax. I go recruiting around the state to try and get students who are graduating from four-year degrees like Virginia Tech and JMU to come here. In order to do so, we have to have a thriving hospitality industry. I can tell you, when we don't pass venue development, Myrtle Beach is clapping, Ocean City's doing cartwheels because they're our competitors. So, I have to share with you, make great decisions. I know you will. I trust you all. You're very intelligent, you're wonderful individuals, and God bless you for what you do. Enough said. By the way, hope you come to our expo on February 1st.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
That's all the speakers you're on.
Thank you. That concludes that part of our agenda, the public comment on the proposed pier project. I will now move to appointments. There are none? Is there any unfinished business? Is there any new business? We'll adjourn. Thank you all very much.